Good evening, welcome to the City of Marshalltown City Hall Council Chambers. Tonight is September 24, 2018, it's 5:30 PM and we're at the council chambers that are located at 10 West State Street. Notice to the public, the mayor and city council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone, state the name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks to about three minutes or less so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers are asked to speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any city councilor specifically. It is in the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. We have been called to order and so if you are able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Very good, full house. We're at that point when we can hear from the councilor, the councilors or administrator, if anybody has any comments.
Your honor, I have a comment. I would like to acknowledge that I have received several phone calls from people who had requested information about work in the alleys for tornado debris removal, on what some of our procedures are for continuing the tornado cleanup, and I have tried to reach out to every one of those and want them to know that we are working internally on many of those procedures to make sure that we can meet the needs of our citizens who are affected by the tornado. That includes someone being ticketed for being, a contractor being ticketed for being on the wrong side of the street, but again, we just have not gotten some of the responses back that we've needed to resolve those issues. So I want to say, we are working to resolve the tornado-related issues in an effective manner, but because of some different instances and different issues, we have not been able to do that, so please reach out to us, any of the councilors, if you have an issue that needs resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilor wish to speak? Then I'll take a moment to read a prepared statement. A few major announcements were made since the council last met and I'd like to talk through those. On September 12, the city was notified that our request for public assistance disaster declaration was approved. This is highly beneficial to the city as we will get reimbursed for the millions of dollars that we have spent in the removal of tree and building debris. The many volunteer hours and volunteer resources will also be used as the city's 15% match to the federal and state funds, which is of great financial assistance to the city. The declaration is also beneficial to other governmental entities like the county and school district and to nonprofits. A few days later, it was announced that Marshalltown did not qualify for the individual assistance disaster declaration, which would have brought financial assistance to residents. This was disappointing for everyone, but was something we had been told to anticipate. City staff is now working with the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to gather additional data for an appeal. We make no promises, but the city is doing everything possible to try and get this declaration. What many of you may not know is how quickly staff started working from, with the state to gather data needed for FEMA to come in and validate conditions to pursue an individual declaration in the weeks following the tornado. City staff worked with state and FEMA personnel over two days to view more than 1,000 properties, though we all recognize the significant amount of damage in our community, it has not been viewed that way with numbers of damaged properties only. As we go through the process of setting up public assistance projects with FEMA, we hope to be able to bring in federal dollars to benefit as much of the community as possible. We have yet to determine what this looks like or means, but please know that we are continuing to work on behalf of all of the residents to ensure the best possible outcomes as a result of the disaster. To those whose homes and businesses that were placarded as dangerous buildings, we understand that this is upsetting, but the city has a moral obligation to protect the health and safety of our residents. I strongly encourage you do what the letter asks and contact the city's building official to identify your plans for the property and work out a timeline for your plans. It's been nine weeks and I don't know if any of us could imagine what we would be as a community at this point. It's frustrating to get the phone calls and interviews from outside media who simply do not understand that a lot of work remains for the residents and the businesses in Marshalltown. There are opportunities though for us to keep telling our story. The city council, city staff, and I have not forgotten you and we are working on your behalf every day and will continue to do so. Thank you for your attention. We're at that point in the meeting when we can recognize yours of service. Chief Tepper?
Good evening, Mike Tepper, Marshalltown Police Department, and it's my honor and pleasure to be up here this morning with officer, this morning, it's been a long Monday, this evening, with Officer Andrew Cole. Andy's got a 30-minute speech prepared?
I've been teaching at DRE schools.
He's been working hard, so. Now, Andy is celebrating 10 years of magnificent service with the City of Marshalltown, and I just want to personally thank Andy for all of his work and effort over the last 10 years. I've had the opportunity to work with Andy for seven of those years. He's one of the few people that has spent, the majority of my time has been spent with him. We have so many officers that have been here so, much longer than me, but Andy and his peer group are steadily ascending to the top of our organization and taking on more leadership roles, and Andy's a big part of what we do. He's a hard worker. He's been very engaged and supportive of our efforts to do more community outreach and community policing, and I appreciate that. And Andy is also a subject matter expert, not just locally, but across the state, when it comes to impaired driving. He's a drug recognition expert, and he's currently, last week and this week, he was teaching officers from across the state how to be drug recognition experts. So he is a expert in his field, and we're very proud of Andy and the work that he does. He's very passionate about law enforcement, very passionate about doing a good job, and he does a great job for us. And he brought his family with him, which I think is really cool, because this job, the family's a big part of what we do. And his wife and kids deserve more credit than Andy does, but honestly, because it's much harder on the family than it is on us, and I think Andy would agree with that. So Andy, on behalf of the City of Marshalltown, thank you for 10 exceptional years with the city and the Marshalltown Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
We're at the item F consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it? As I understand it, it would be with the request that items number five and six are withdrawn.
Held for further discussion, thank you.
Is there?
Second.
Moved down seconded? Discussion, roll call?
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Madam Clerk, would you read the consent agenda items, please?
Approve September 10 council meeting minutes, approve bill list in the amount of $1,852,321.64. Approve the June financial statements. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2015 Chrysler Town and Country van from Luci Auto for the price of $21,200 for use in the police department as detective vehicle and pool vehicle. Resolution approving annual city street financial report for fiscal year 2018. Resolution approving an agreement with Adurson Corporation for the replacement of the roof at the public works facility. Resolution authorizing hiring of police reserve officer Melinda Roop. Approve alcohol license renewals. Casey's General Store, 1564 and 3228, TC's Tacos and Marisco's Moravia and Express Mart.
Thank you. Let's turn to item number five then, for further discussion.
Resolution approving amended agreement between the City of Marshalltown, Marshall County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for a city highway bridge program project, North Center Street Bridge Replacement.
I would just ask what the city's involvement with that would be, Justin, since how it's not really in the limits?
Sure. It's been a number of years ago, I think it might be getting close to three years ago, so I'm stretching the council's memory, but we did have an agreement. The city was the applicant for those federal funds, because the bridge is right on the corporate line between the county and the city. That agreement was approved in the fall of 2015 or early 2016. This is an amended agreement wherein, again, the city is the applicant, but the funds will be directly deposited to the county for the replacement of that bridge. So that's the answer as to how this started, a number of years ago, the city was the applicant in agreement with the county and the funds go directly to the county. If that doesn't make sense, because it's not that perfectly clear, by all means, please ask me further questions.
I just want to verify, this is the bridge near the waterworks on North Center?
Yes, the funding is only for the one bridge, though.
Could you describe the property again, then?
Yes, this is for the bridge over the Iowa River. There are four bridges, as you go out to the north, three little ones and then the major bridge over the Iowa River. This funding is only for that bridge over the Iowa River on North Center Street.
Do the other bridges need replacement?
Yes, yes, that's the reason, that's the reason I mention that, is the county has a project to replace all four bridges, two in one year and two in the next year, so in my mind, it made perfect sense, but yes, thanks for asking that question. Yes, all four bridges will be replaced in the coming years. This funding agreement is only for the Iowa River Bridge.
Will this close the bridge for, what's the length of time that it will be out of commission?
I would defer that question to the county engineer, as they're the actual managers, but to the best of my understanding, as there are four bridges, the construction will happen over two years and the road will essentially be closed for those two years. Because the four bridges are grouped so closely together, basically between the old waterworks and KDAO, those are where those four bridges exist.
And I assume the alternative is to go up 14 and come back from the north?
Again, I defer to the county engineer, but yeah, that'd be my presumption as well.
So the people still can get to their homes in that area?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I presume Counselor Cahill's talking.
Well, they have to keep two of the, two of the bridges open at all times so they can get the materials into the waterworks. So they'll do the south two first, and so that they can still come in from the north. They'll do the south two first so that they can come in from the north and get supplies into the waterworks, and then when those two are done, then they do the other two and then come in from the south.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for Justin?
I move for approval, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Carried, on to item G motions, and the first one is to approve the new liquor license applications and changes to existing licenses.
Yes, Your Honor, there are three changes and one new, or two changes and a new one. We have smoking G's, they want to add Sunday sales, and Central Iowa Fair with a premise update relating to Oktoberfest activities. Since the Oktoberfest has a liquor license, the Central Iowa Fair needs to remove their license so the new one can be in effect. And then we have the owner of La Raza Taco Shop from 822 North Third Avenue here to include, for, apply for a Class B beer license, which includes wine coolers, and he is here, so.
Is there a motion to approve it?
I will move second.
Any further discussion?
Is La Raza new?
I'm Robert Burr, 822 North Third Avenue. So yes, we opened up the location where Uncle Jack's used to be in July, just a week before the tornado, actually.
Good timing.
Right?
I have to admit, it's delicious, if you haven't been there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Be spending the money, you know, during the next year. So it could wait, however, we don't know what our bonding needs are for next year. We do have basically $10 million of tax exempt bonding available to us every calendar year. And so we do know that we have not completed the bonding for the SRF loan for the manhole, lamp hole project, and so that will count towards it. I think right now we're probably, I don't know if we'll get that completed before the end of the year or not, but it's just trying to balance out what we don't know at this point, if there would be any major bonding that we'd have to do in the next year. But I believe we are tax exempt on this one. So there's, that's the purpose of it.
Okay, well, I would, I would think that we ought to wait till spring to, to do it. I don't see any reason by borrowing the money now and just leaving it late, because people have a tendency to spend money with it laying there, so he'll, he'll have a better handle on his projects next spring. And we can, we can do the bonds in the spring, they'll still be taxed exempt next year, right?
Well, normally, we put it on our tax levy.
Yes.
So for the coming year, we had put that principal and interest on the tax levy for next fiscal year.
Yes.
So we know the exact amount, where if you wait till the spring, we're not going to know that amount. We wouldn't necessarily put it on the levy.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't need to be borrowing money six to nine months before we're going to need it, and we know it.
And when the money is sitting in our checking account, we do draw interest on it, and that interest is credited back to the, to the bond fund or to the fund that it is in.
Yeah, but there's only so much of that we can collect, and then they want us to pay taxes on that. I've been through that process.
Yeah, so you're talking about the arbitrage process, and that's only if we haven't spent funds after three years, I believe. And so I, I think with the amount that we're talking about, that it would certainly be spent within three years of the date of borrowing.
Okay. I don't agree with borrowing it now, though.
When, when would we actually settle?
December.
December.
And I guess my...
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
Well, and then, so we go through the budget process in January and February, and then it's settled.
But on the levy, yeah.
And we know exactly what we're looking at.
I would certainly propose to know where we're going to sit next year.
That's just typical. This is when we usually do it. It makes sense to me to continue that practice.
I understand Councilman Lamer's view of not borrowing it ahead of time, but I also feel we need to have a good handle on what we're going to need for the following year, or where we're going to sit for the following year.
Is there, I, one of the reasons that we've done it this time of year in the past is because of interest rates and the direction they're going.
Well, the closer you get to calendar year end, the more different cities are in the market, because they all want to finish it before December 31st. So we're trying to get ahead of that bubble a little bit. And then, yeah, we like to close in December, so we don't have any principal payment this fiscal year, since we never levied for it.
Is our, the firm that usually helps us with the...
Spear Financial.
Offering, do they, are they recommending, are they, I mean, is it better to do it now than wait?
Right. They're recommending doing it now before the end of the fiscal year. I mean, the calendar year.
Just make some money.
Yeah, well, they would make it anyway. They would make it anyway, but yeah, just a little sooner. But usually, they've said, you know, oh, we've, you know, interest rates are going up, and they have been, and so I don't know if there's any benefit there if we're taking a little less risk by doing it a little sooner than waiting, but...
I'm not sure if the interest rates will change between December and the spring.
Well, I know you don't. Nobody knows. Nobody knows.
Yeah, but, okay.
And again, the vote is just to set the hearing?
No, my husband doesn't.
Yes.
Any other discussion? I think there's some...
We have a motion and a second. Let's call a roll.
Lamer?
He wants...
Oh, I'm sorry. If there's somebody from the public, yeah, maybe I need to have you raise your hand or stand.
Mark Eaton, South, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I'm just wondering if anyone can tell me what the impact on the revenue to the city is of the tornado damage, and how that's going to impact our ability to repay this bond.
That's information that our financial advisor is working on, and when we have a, a more precise amount, after basically you discussed the parking lot tonight, then that's information that we'll provide to, to all of you at probably the next meeting.
If there is no other public comment, let's call a roll.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Carry it, and so I'm to resolution item number two, please.
Resolution approving contract change order number one for the 2018 micro-surfacing project.
Good evening. Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. As the council may remember, we led a project earlier this season for micro-surfacing of Third Street, Sixth Street, from Main Street at the north end to Iowa Avenue at the south end. We have, we did get a bid, we did have a contractor under contract. All summer, they kept telling us to wait a couple weeks until they would be here, and then, oh, probably at the beginning of this month, they finally proposed a schedule in which to be here, to do the work in late September, and then into October. The specification for micro-surfacing says that micro-surface shall not be placed in October without written consent of the engineer. As such, I worried about the impact to our warranty on said work if I allowed them to place the micro-surfacing in October. Our contractor, Farnum, proposed that they would keep the same price, and that they would put us on the list for first thing in the summer of 2019. I mulled over the idea, and I think it's in our best interest to allow them to do that. I have heard nothing but horror stories about placing micro-surfacing in October or later, because of the cooler temperatures, because of the short daylight hours, and as such, there is a resolution and a proposed change order in front of you to extend the completion date until June 30th of 2019. Are there any questions I can answer?
Was there any reasoning, was the tornado a reason, or was, as I looked at their letter to us, it didn't seem to have any explanation, just be asking for an extension?
Yes. I get the feeling that they overbooked themselves, so we're, we're being very polite and lenient here in granting them an extension. There is always a cost to litigation or charging liquidated damages. I wrestled myself with whether or not to allow them an extension, but for the long-term payment on that street, I do believe it's in the city's best interest to grant them a, a time extension.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So move.
I will second.
Any other questions or discussion by the council?
Can you go over the pricing and put, I mean, will this impact the overall cost?
No, nope. The cost stays the same to do the work next year.
Okay, good.
Okay. What was that?
Roof upon our, uh, work upon our roof.
Okay. Thank you. Good. I thought I was hearing things. If there, is, is there any public comment? Let's call a roll on this one, then.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
And it carried, item J has ordinances, but nothing under it, so let's go to item K, discussion, and the first topic is...
Discussion of the insurance settlement for the senior citizens building.
Yes, I included a memo in your packet, which outlined what our insurance company is offering. It's $1.2 million in replacement cost for the facility, or if we were to not do replace, not to actually replace, they would give us an actual cash value settlement of $690,000. One of the things that I, I, I will tell you, I'm recommending that we move forward with demolition, we'll kind of list some of the reasons why. To put the building back to what it was prior to July 19th is still a building that's costing our general fund a significant amount of money each year, and would still be one that we would, we would still have to put money in and above the replacement cost to get it to the point where it was energy efficient and not basically, that $30,000 was essentially our, our heating bills. And so that, the replacement cost payment does not change anything with that. One of the second things was that in, in our conversations about changing the, the lease ending date with the two entities to December 31st of 2019, that that was, we'd taken some progress towards saying that there, there needed to be a stop to this, or we needed to do a major renovation of the building. And so there's, there's certainly that to consider as well, that we were looking at, at least putting the building on ice in, in 2020 for future discussion. I, I will say that as 2020 came along, we were not going to have a source to pay for a demolition such as we have right now, and so that would be something by, by, you know, delaying that decision, or just the way things happen. This has provided a, a revenue source of insurance proceeds that we certainly weren't going to have in 2020 unless something would have happened there. I want to say that the two agencies that have been renting that space, in our conversations previously regarding the leases, you had directed that I work with each of them to try and find suitable new locations, and the tornado had spurred that as well. There was the immediate where there was not much that could be done, because we had a lot of stuff going on, but in the past month or two, I've had time to sit and talk with Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, specifically about potentially relocating to our upper second story of Old City Hall, once finance was to move downstairs to a renovated space, and we'll be following up with that conversation on Friday with their CEO, who is coming into town to view all locations that they have picked out. And same with the Senior Citizen Center. I've, I've worked with them, not on the temporary space, because we just don't have anything that's big enough to accommodate their needs, but what are the possibilities as the council moves forward, talking about the Coliseum? Is there a potential location for them within the Coliseum? And so those are discussions that are obviously ongoing, based on what you all would like to do with the future of the Coliseum, but the tornado release spurred more of that conversation than had been happening before that. I'm also happy to say that this has brought forth a conversation that was actually something in our strategic plan, but probably brought more people to the table. The Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging does do some recreational programming, and on Friday as well, we're getting together with Jenny from Parks and Rec Department, and we're going to have a conversation about how we can support each other, and what that might look like in the future. The same conversation was starting with the, the Senior Citizen Center as well. I'm not sure where that looks like in a, in a, you know, if they're in a temporary space, so that remains to be seen. But I think if anything that's come out of this is that we, as the city, can either better support their programming, and hopefully try to get more seniors into their programming, or we can look to potentially fill some gaps that they might have in programming, and make, make more senior-specific programming part of our recreational programs. But what I'm looking for tonight is that if you agree with my recommendation of demolition, I would request a motion directing staff to communicate with our insurance adjuster about the city's attempt to demolish the building with, if, if, if it is the direction of a formal resolution, can be placed on the October 8th agenda for your formal consideration at that point.
Do we have a cost for desi, for demolition of the building?
And I have had conversations, which with the insurance adjuster and with our insurance agent, who, based on the size of the building and the fact that there is a very deep basement in the back, put it in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000.
And if you can refresh my memory, did we have an estimate with regards to what the additional cost would be to upgrade the building after we would get it back to its original state?
No, that was something that I was not directed to move forward with in getting a better cost estimate.
Are you, is the $1.2 million, that won't put the building back to original condition, will it?
No. Yes and no. So unfortunately, when you have catastrophic damage to a building, you have to bring it up to current codes. And so that's the, that's the piece that would be missing, is that we would, I believe we'd have to update the electrical system. That was the major one that I think was the, the upgrade.
How about the elevator?
Yeah, the elevator would be part of that, too, yes. So, but the, I think the electrical system was more costly.
But they're willing, the insurance company is willing to give us a payout of $690,000?
Yes.
And it's going to cost us $500,000 to $600,000 to tear it down, so we're going to end up with nothing? Is that, is that my numbers right? Is that right?
The, the, the way that this has, has been explained to me is that, yes, if we're taking actual cash value for the building, they do not care what we do with it, and that if we tear it down at a cost less than what they've paid us out for, then those proceeds can be used by the council for any other purpose.
Well, I would, I would want us to, if we decide to go ahead and take the building down, I would want us to, to use the rest of the money and make sure that even if we have to bond some money, to build a, a nice facility for the senior citizens. I think we've spent a lot of money on parks and recs for the kids and everybody else, and I think they need, they deserve the same thing. So we will have, at that time, we'll have a, what, a quarter of a block or half a block over there that we own, that, that we could, we could build a decent facility for them.
I, since you brought up the, the potential reuse of the site, I will tell you that we have a number of developers that are already talking to the city about having a strong interest in that site for its location and size.
Well, the, the R and D study that was done five or six years ago, that talked about Main Street and the redevelopment of this area, they had that, that the city should acquire that block, so that they could build low-cost housing and some other items on that block, and I'm, I'm looking at that block and saying, we, we probably should be talking to those people, because there's, everything's coming down except one.
At this point, our direction to these developers has been that they need to talk to the, the private owners in that area, and, and just see what's possible. So that's where, hopefully, we'll have some proposals to bring back to you at some point related to, to probably the, the low to moderate income housing, as well as senior housing.
Well, don't you think we ought to be in on this?
We are not developers, and I don't think...
Well, I don't, I don't claim to be a developer. I'm just saying the city needs, needs to take step forward and say, okay, we have developers that want to develop this area. Why don't we see what we can do to help them get the, get the land they need to do it with?
I'll defer to Michelle, since she's been the one who's doing a lot of work with these developers.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. So we have had a lot of inquiries since the tornado about development. Many of you may recall, prior to the end of the year, we had a housing needs assessment that was completed. We knew we had some housing shortfalls that we were trying to fill pre-tornado. Certainly, we have more of those following it. Some of the actions that the state has taken after the tornado have been to put a set aside in the low-income housing tax credit program under the 2019 application round, specifically for Marshalltown due to the disaster. So what that means is that as these low-income housing tax credit applications and developers are looking for possible projects, Marshalltown has a specific amount of funding of that allocation that will be available to developers. This has really increased our loveliness to those developers, and they are anxious to look and see what they can do for Marshalltown. And so we have had, oh goodness, more than half a dozen that have been knocking on the door regularly, looking for potential project sites all over the community. But downtown certainly is an appealing location for some of them due to the proximity of services. And so that is a high-ranking threshold for those applications. Those pre-applications for the tax credit program are due November 1st. So we're coming up on a very, very tight timeline for these projects to be submitted to the Iowa Finance Authority for consideration and part of the market study. So I think that the possibility, this discussion related to this site in particular and that surrounding, is one that will be very appealing to the potential for redevelopment, just as we've discussed. That city center plan, I believe is the one that you might be referring to, was done in 2006. So it's, it's been a little ways, but it did. It called for some new housing development up in this area. Certainly may not look exactly as we had envisioned it there, but could have some very similar characteristics. And so I think that if there's opportunity for the council having interest in talking about sites and being a part of those discussions, I will have people here as soon as you'll welcome them to have that conversation, because that is, they are, they are anxiously awaiting. Those same developers are approaching the private side of things to try to see what properties can be secured on the private side. I don't think there's a need for us as a city to try to secure those additional properties to, to make that package. Many of those developers are used to doing that. And so whether it's talking to a private business or a lot that's now vacant, they're, they're already making those approaches to see what might be available, in the hopes that if the city should make some of our land become available, that they're ready to go. So I think that those things will come together on their own in a lot of ways, and if they need our assistance in something, by all means, we're happy to help and have conversations. You know, I don't necessarily see us in a position of, like I said, of acquiring, especially because it's a very competitive application round as well. And so typically, they're just looking at options on properties until they know for sure that they have an allocation award, so.
That was my question about the timing. Like, do, would, does it matter whether the property is actually available or not when they send in this pre-application, or are they just saying, this is a project I'd like to do in Marshalltown?
No, they do need to have, on the November 1st date, they have to identify a site. They don't have to have site control at that November 1st date. If they go through the market study after November, that's something that the state initiates, Iowa Finance Authority initiates. If that market study comes back favorable, that yes, this is a project that could be supported by the market, the rents, and so on, then that developer then looks at that and says, okay, I have a favorable project, now I can invest in the rest of the development process. And I've had developers tell me, you know, that's a very expensive and timely process for them to do. And so if they get that favorable response from IFA about the market, then they're eligible to submit a full application and complete application January, I believe, 16th. And at that point, they do have to have site control, so that would be an option for purchase. It might be actual having it already purchased. Many, you will see, an option. Because if the allocation, like I said, does not come through after they submit a full application, of course, they want to release, release that back to the market. I believe in the past, the tax credit award announcements usually come out in like March, I believe. So that's about the timeframe that they would then know if their project was approved.
Michelle, go ahead.
Have they indicated to you what they're looking for from the city as a deferral on taxes?
You know, we've definitely had that discussion with many of them, and currently, what we have on the books for residential tax abatement citywide is our three-year, 100%, five-year, or 10-year sliding scale. Within a TIF, different urban renewal, you know, area like downtown, we have the flexibility, of course, to come before you as the council with development agreements that maybe have different structures for rebates, or if there are infrastructures or things of that need. So that's something that becomes more negotiable, and obviously would need council decision-making.
Have they talked to you about those issues?
Yes.
Okay, so they're looking at them, too, so that's...
They are certainly looking at them.
So, okay, so we're going to be involved?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Now, if, if a developer decided to just take the standard tax abatement that we have on the books, that's just a simple application after they're constructed and comes before you in the formal approval. But if we're talking about a development agreement, that is definitely something that comes before you.
Okay, thank you.
And would likely have some discussion early before that November 1st deadline.
Okay, thanks a lot.
And Michelle, do we only, if there are six people applying for, for this, do we only select one, or is there the opportunity for more than one to be accepted?
Great question, and I had this exact same question, so we did pose that to Iowa Finance Authority to get an opinion on. And we do not have to select one. So the expression that we got, don't put all your eggs in one basket, right? So that is a competitive process, and so let their applications go through that process with Iowa Finance Authority. If we felt that there was a project that did not support our needs as a community, certainly we can say, we're not willing to support this project. Everybody that I have talked with, I believe, is, is a project that would be supported, and is a need that would be filled. So I would not recommend selecting one. At this point, it's very possible, too, that we would see multiple people approaching a same site, and that is a possibility that could happen. I'd like to think that most of them are kind of working in some of their own areas, and maybe that will settle out by November, and property owners will decide who they're kind of leaning towards. But that is a possibility as well, and that's all stuff that IFA will take into consideration as they review the applications for what awards should be made.
Okay, so let me clarify again. Does the IFA only select one? So if six people put forth applications, could we possibly have three projects out of that, or is there only going to be one project?
No, we could have multiple projects that come. It is unlikely to see multiple projects in a community, but given the set aside, especially this year due to the disaster, the feeling is, is that we have a, obviously, a very good chance for that set aside. And then we should have some competitively scoring applications where there might be one additional award. There might be two. It's all based on the points and the thresholds and, and the different things that go into the calculations that IFA puts forward on that application. Like I said, is, it's a very competitive and detailed process.
Thank you very much.
So we won't, there won't be somebody trying to build a new courthouse here and taking the property away? No.
Do you know the amount of the set aside?
It's 7% of the allocation, which I'm not exactly sure what that totals out to. And tax credits have a very weird way of, of filtering themselves out in the financial world, but what I understand from most of the developers that have spoken with me is that it would support one project. And they, and they often have other things that are coming together as part of those projects. If you remember the Tallcorn and the Iowa Wholesale Building, you know, those ranged, I think the Tallcorn had 17 different funding partners that came together. So these are very complex projects that require a lot of different pieces to make that whole puzzle work.
Thank you much.
And then, okay, so, I don't know if you can answer this. It's okay if it's not the right time, but, you know, we're going to have a downtown plan.
Correct.
A new downtown plan. So we're talking about the old downtown plan. This is, the Senior Citizen Center is something that I would have envisioned being part of the new downtown plan, right? Along with any Coliseum work or any other spaces we needed, or anything, any other needs, more housing, all of that. So how, how do you see that fitting in to...
You know, with relation to, and I'll, I'll speak broadly for the whole plan. We were awarded, we spoke previously about the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation Award, very gracious, $100,000, and we were also very fortunate to secure another $100,000 from the U.S. Economic Development Administration to go towards the plan. So we have a total of $200,000 specifically designated for planning, so that is not for actual work, it's not for engineering and design work, but for the planning process. Looking at our downtown ranging, I'm going to say from like Third Street to Fifth Avenue, up in the, up to Grant Street approximately, all the way down to like the Madison corridor there underneath. So it's a large scope area. Part of that is driven by the Opportunity Zone, which we had designated last year as a good portion of that property, and so that kicked in our eligibility under EDA. And so that plan will look at a lot of those different things that we've talked about. You know, what are our needs in the downtown, whether it be retail, business, professional services, our governmental needs, our social service needs, you know, how are city buildings, how are commercial buildings? What does that look like for us in the future? The RDG City Center Plan that was done in 2006, I would say is a very successful plan. We had almost $100 million worth of improvements made to our downtown area since that plan was completed. And I hope the very same will happen for this. So there's a lot that will be included. There'll be a lot of public involvement and engagement throughout that whole process. We hope to kick that off here within the next month in getting requests for qualifications started and that process going, and it'll probably take us a good six months or so to get through that process, because it is such a large scope.
And so, oh, go ahead.
I was going to, going to ask, our current long-range planning for the Coliseum did have some space for the senior center allocated. Is that correct?
It's absolutely something we discussed, yes. In the feasibility study, when we, when we went through that process, we talk about that various levels, whether it be the second floor, the main floor, now that it would be fully accessible. levels, whether it be the second floor, the main floor, now that it would be fully accessible, that there could be space that's designated for those senior services to hold activities, to have designated space that was, you know, theirs for use for their, and as well as flex space. You know, you have the other rooms that they can then use as part of their activities that have larger need and things. So that was something that was discussed. At the time, obviously, we didn't know the situation we would be in now. So there was still a lot of, you know, uncertainty as to whether that was going to be the best fit. But I think it certainly can accommodate it.
Thank you.
I do have another question. It's still along this downtown plan lines. Because the Senior Citizen Center is one piece, there are lots of moving parts, things already starting to happen, applications already started, you know, for these pre-applications for the tax credit thing, and then other people looking to develop. And how do you see the timing of that all working together for a really cohesive movement forward for our downtown? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where we just don't have people making decisions that really don't fall into the downtown plan.
I think, you know, it's going to be a balancing act. Because certainly, we don't want people to think, "Oh, I have to wait until the plan is done." You know, we have a lot of businesses that are anxious to reopen. They're anxious to rebuild. They want to get started. We want those things to move forward. We don't want to say, "You can't do until we're done with this plan six months from now." So part of that will be on that consultant and on us as a community to say, "What's happening? And how do we best incorporate that? What are the ways that we can do that to make all of it successful?" And so, because we recognize that things are going to be happening. Decisions are being made every day already, and they're in the works. And so we'll have to incorporate those things in that planning process. And so it's not the intention to hold things up. Certainly, it will also hopefully help people make decisions down the road about what is the best route to go if they're still in that influx position, or we have buildings that have been removed and that now we have opportunity for new development. What is the best thing to go there? What is the best thing for it to look like and serve? So it'll be a combination of the two. We know that that will, we're not stopping anything by doing a plan. We have to continue to live with where we're at. And so that will be an important piece for that consultant to be able to work through that.
Thank you.
Can't we use the existing plan until he, because we're talking about a year before he's done with this plan?
I would hope we're looking at about a six-month window.
No, no, because you said it would take six months just to get him on board.
No, 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 no. We hope to have somebody on board in October.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
October?
Yeah, that would be our request for qualifications. As soon as we can get approval through EDA, on that request, we'll be posting that and looking for consultant. Ideally, we would love to have an award of a contract, maybe at your second October meeting. That's maybe feeling a little ambitious, but we're kind of reaching for that.
Good luck.
Yeah. So we'll see. But no, we would hope that it would go further. And we will absolutely continue to use what we have on the books, just as we have been doing.
Yeah, it's a good plan.
It is a good. There's a lot of great things.
There's nothing wrong with it. Matter of fact, we're starting to do exactly what that plan told. It said to start to build the library and then start from the library and work uptown. And that's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah. As I said, we accomplished a lot. We actually received even recognition from the American Planning Association for the implementation of that plan.
Yeah, so.
Something to be very proud of as a community.
The plan, it's a good plan. They need to update it. I understand that, but.
Yeah. And they'll take that plan into consideration in the new one, too, to see, well, what did we do there?
But we can't stop the progress of what is going on today. We got to keep it moving.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We sure have had an influx of downtown housing that's really been very nice and not badly, well, I guess the wholesale building was.
Wholesale building was a, definitely took a hit. And they are still working through what their future plans will be. They're dedicated to Marshalltown and to the community, and they want to provide senior housing. And so that is something that they are working towards as the best way they can.
Mr. Martin, you looked like you were going to ask a question a little while ago. Do you remember it?
I do remember it. I'm not sure it's Jermaine.
I don't think mine was all Jermaine either. It's all great discussion.
We have a pretty lax standard on that one.
I hardly agree that there's much room for improvement and opportunity, no doubt in my mind. The question I have, and I still argue with myself, it's Jermaine, is the state of the buildings of the Senior Citizen Center and the Coliseum. I don't know if it's a comparative question or not. But if something is more feasible with one building than another, that weighs, you know, into the equation. Either way, we have some investments to make and considerations to make as well. I guess I'm in a quandary as to what to do moving forward. I guess we can wait for the plan or follow what we've done. I do like what we've seen as a proposal for the Coliseum. I really like it. It's got a lot of flexibility. It would be a modern type of thing with restrooms and elevators and so on. I question whether we're prepared to put two elevators in two different buildings at such great costs of maintenance and so on, insurance and whatever. So those are rhetorical questions. You know, again, I don't know how they fit into the overall equation, but I think there are certainly considerations to be made. End of statement, end of question.
I would, and I don't know where we're at on this, whether we're making a proposal or a movement. But I, seeing the Coliseum plan that was put forth last year, I would love to see the Senior Citizens Center incorporated into the Coliseum plan to make that fully a multipurpose building. My only concern is convenient parking for all involved. I know that we need to have access that is convenient for all. But I do see that Coliseum becoming a center of our community as a more multipurpose building by being able to use it for not only Parks and Rec, but the senior center on a daily basis that it is used, as well as other Parks and Rec activities for students and community events, et cetera. But I do think that that would be certainly my appeal to moving the senior center to the Coliseum to make that truly a multipurpose building for the community.
And I think the, just to address the parking, you know, with the modifications proposed to the Coliseum and the handicap accessible entrance to the west, a redesign of that parking to make sure that your handicap accessible parking is right there next to that entrance was all outlined. And of course, too, we're going to see a shift with our police and fire where this parking, you know, adjacent here is going to open up significantly with employee and the city vehicles that are no longer going to be parked there on a daily basis. So we're going to see some parking shifts in this area that will accommodate that nicely.
Go to.
I've been patiently waiting my turn there. Back to square one. Do we have a specific estimate or a bid on demolition of that building?
No, this is at a cost threshold where we would need to put it out to bid, you know, $500,000 to $600,000 is a pretty big range and a pretty big dollar amount. And so that's also where, because of some of the complexity with the building in that very deep basement, that's where I would want to hire an engineer. Our engineering staff is overtaxed at this time with other things, to put together some plans and specifications on that so that we're asking everybody to bid on the same thing. So there would be a little bit of cost involved to make sure that we're doing things properly.
But we don't have a number to throw around right now.
I think you're safe with $500,000 to $600,000, but that's a pretty big range.
Could be less.
It always could be less. One of the things that we do have working in our favor right now is mobilization costs are pretty much not in the picture because we have so many different demolition contractors currently mobilized.
And do we have any assessed value on what that land would be worth after we demoed it, if we were to, to recruit additional costs from that property?
Give me one moment. I know that there is an assessed value assigned by the assessor, but obviously, we don't pay anything for it. So let me find that real quick.
Have we thought about the possibility, since we're going to rebuild the Coliseum, that we build a little wing off of it for the senior citizens so it's all one level? And that way, they'll have access to use of the Coliseum if they need it, but they'll have their own building right beside it? Just make it a wing off of the Coliseum?
I don't know that we would have the space for that. I mean, you'd take up that west parking lot, which you really do need. If you're putting the elevator on that side, then that's where you do need to locate your ADA accessible parking.
Well, we could take half of that lot, make a nice, that'd make a really nice building. One story, all one level?
Currently, the land is assessed at $24,300. And the building is actually assessed at $30,200.
What comment?
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. I don't know legally if this can be done. You said the insurance company is willing to pay $690,000. They don't care what you do with the building. Is that correct?
Basically, at actual cash value, it's just a payout of the actual cash value.
Why can't we take the money, like Leon has suggested? And why can't we put the onus of the destruction of the building on the new developers? Because if they're looking at buying that whole block, they're not going to make the homeowners tear those houses down. They'll do the destruction. And in the timetable, if Michelle's saying that some of this stuff's going to happen as soon as January, it's hard to believe that that building would come down that fast or couldn't wait till after January. Can we take the money and run on this and put the onus of destruction legally on the developer?
I think we could, but we'd have to probably give them the land, which would be really a good deal. We'd smile all the way to the bank, that's for sure.
Right. I mean, it's pay me now or pay me later. And if this is going to be a low-income housing, you know, and it's going to be, we're not going to get property tax on it anyway, so why would we take the $690 and spend it? Let's take the $690 and keep it because we're not going to generate anything from it in the future.
I would say that you, I mean, we could always put it out to bid one way or the other, but if you receive no bids, because you're basically asking somebody to take on a $500,000 to $600,000 upfront cost before they could put in anything else. And so I think that would probably be more of a deterrent to redevelopment on the property.
But if she's saying people are willing to move by January, you're talking about the Mexican restaurant. They've got to tear down Harold Klein's building. They've got to tear down.
They're not tearing down Klein's building. They're rebuilding it. You just looked at.
I know. I'm just saying if a developer comes in and if Harold sells to them, if they want the whole city block, you've got other buildings that would have to come down.
So things don't have to be torn down. They just have to have a site secured, basically.
And then the other thing is, getting back to Leon's comment, the $690,000 windfall, maybe you can buy additional parking, like maybe you buy Family Video, and you can do your wing to the west, and now you have a nice parking lot across the street, you know, something like that. That's all. Thanks.
Michelle?
I just want to make a quick comment. Certainly, costs and stuff associated with a project, if we have put that demo on a developer, would be something that they would not look favorably upon. And second, just because it is a locum housing tax credit does not mean it does not pay property tax. It does pay property tax. It falls under a different calculation with the Section 42, but there is property tax that's paid.
Thank you.
Can I make a public comment? My name is Linda Clark. I live at 306 South Second Avenue. I am the I in city and the U in public, and I've listened to this conversation that's taken place here today. If the adjuster feels that $1.2 million is going to be allowed to put this building back up into condition, I use the facility upstairs and downstairs. The building prior to the tornado had two kitchen facilities, one upstairs, one downstairs. They were both working. Upstairs, they needed and had an order put in for the dishwasher to be repaired. That I am aware of. The restrooms, both up and down, were handicap accessible and working. No leaks visible to me. The elevator was working and handicap accessible to the upstairs. It could be brought up to code or replaced. And having sat in on the Coliseum advisory and heard that the money was received with the insurance money to put in the elevator for the Coliseum, this building was being used by many persons coming from surrounding communities, and a number of them are here in the audience tonight that I am aware of. Gladbrook, Van Cleve, Tama, Conrad, State Center, Melbourne, and Le Grand. Some examples that took place there, such as meals, it's a social gathering, it's a bingo place. They had bingo upstairs and downstairs with their own facilities to use, dances, exercise class, quilting, meetings, card playing, shuffleboard, pool games, and et cetera. Private donations were given to the facility. And please recall my previous comment at council meeting on July 23rd of securing the facility, and I asked for a record of items in the building after the tornado. It is a public city-owned building for 55 and up, a year-round facility with central location and ample parking available for day and night use, and it is already handicap accessible. I disagree with the city administrator's suggestion to demolish this building, and I've already stated about the Coliseum. I believe the $1.2 million to put this building back in use would be a very good option that would benefit the city and public for many years to come. The structure withstood the 140 mile an hour tornado winds and is a historic building as well. And Mr. Klein, I have visited with them, and they are securing and making their building, and they plan to keep it. I have that from personal knowledge, which I did mention at the July 23rd, their building then was declared structurally sound. The administrator stated in her letter to the council about the cost to the city from the general fund. The city allocates dollars for other public entity use, the library, the aquatic center, and Parks and Rec, which this facility has benefited many individuals. The local option sales tax dollars are available from all persons, which would benefit everyone in this age group 55 and up. The city now subsidizes all of these other public facilities, knowing it is not a money-making proposition. And I think, when it has been stated that persons were talked to, I don't know who is in authority of Senior Citizen Incorporated that would be speaking for me and the other persons that have been using it. I do know the pods are sitting out there that has, the pool tables, I'm assured, they should be in there, the organs, the pianos, the things that were donated. That's why I asked for there to be an inventory, because a number of persons donated things. And I also know that the Salvation Army was working with, and Hy-Vee, and Walmart, and places like that, to donate things that were used for the bingo that was being done on Fridays up there, which I did participate in that. I do know that downstairs had just recently been painted and redone, and it was beautiful the day the tornado sirens went off. I was there. So I would strongly say, $1.2 million. I know there are plenty of things that could be done with making it more energy efficient. There are solar panels, there is insulation, but that brick and that solid tile and stuff inside, I doubt that any of the rain has damaged. It wouldn't have to be taken out, like what they removed for the Coliseum, the wood floor and stuff. That was gutted. Things could be done. I volunteered to go in and help clean up when I heard from a city official that stuff was being left to rot in there, but then I was told it wasn't safe for me to do it. So it's been locked. I haven't been in there. But I know the condition that it was July 19th. There were those of us that were there. And I ask, please, think the $1.2 million to fix it is far better than to get rid of a centrally located facility that we, the city, already owns. And I am the I. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Roger Schroeder, 1936 Vine Avenue. I do live outside the city limits. I share Linda's concern, and I listen with you guys, your involvement for the Senior Citizen Center. Different proposals are looked at. My request is that, and I'm an avid shuffler, and so I'm a little selfish, that you take into consideration some time or some space for two concrete shuffleboard courts. What we have in Marshalltown is a hidden gem. To my knowledge, we've only got, or Marshalltown's the only one in Iowa that's got two regulation shuffleboard courts. And we've got people coming from surrounding areas, Des Moines, we've got a couple from Pleasant Hill here. We've got other couples that come out of Des Moines, from Vinton, just so that they can shuffle on good regulation shuffleboard courts. Now, when they. Now, when they come to town, they buy meals. So I know on Tuesdays, there's at least eight meals being bought in Marshalltown, so there's some hidden benefits, too. So, that's my request, is that you give it full consideration, the space requirement. We're looking at somewhere about 18 foot wide by 60 foot in length, and preferably they would be concrete. There's some money to be saved, you don't need drains like the current one has, because you don't wash the courts, we dust them down. So, I guess that's enough said about that. The other thing is, I did get in shortly after there, I got with Bobby Reader, and we gathered up the shufflecourt equipment, other than the scoreboards, they were lagged to the floor. So I have in my possession the shuffleboard cues and discs, so if Park and Rec or whoever wants to take possession of them, they can do it, or I'll hang on to them, and when we have the little courts, I'll bring them in. So, but Bobby Reader's got my name and number, and so, and if I can be of any help to people on specifications and so forth, I'd be willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Barbara L. Orton, I live at 2431 Sand Road, and I came into the senior center every day and ate a good balanced meal, and then we played bingo or cards or something, and I had to withdraw afterwards, because there was nowhere to go. I mean, for five years I came in there, and I met a lot of good friends and family, and I hope, when you guys get up there and 80 years old, that you've got a senior center to go to. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Yes, sir?
Larry Forbes from LaGrande. We came in once a week, at least three of us, and ate lunch somewhere in Marshalltown and played on that shuffleboard court. Never played shuffleboard before I came to that, that place, I think it is the only one in Iowa. I brought my 95-year-old father-in-law in, he used to play shuffleboard, but he now just sits and watches it, and he can no longer do that. So, I would vote for refurbishing that building, and the shuffleboard courts are there and ready to go. I don't know what the inside of it looks like now, but I would think the bottom floor should be okay. So I'd like to mention that, that there are people came from all over to use those courts, and then they did eat before or after usually.
Thank you, sir.
Your honor, can I ask a question of our, of our guests? I guess I want to know what is their opposition to doing that same thing if it was part of the Coliseum? I just, I guess that I'm saying, if we can secure the Coliseum to provide the same facilities, I don't, I guess I want to know what the opposition is to that, if that's, if that's an issue.
I might make a comment, but good.
If you don't mind, since we televised it, it's better if you come to the microphone.
Well, I'm encouraged that lease-wise, the Coliseum is being considered. And Kathy Waldemar used to be the manager of the Senior Citizen Center. She mentioned that at one time, there were two shufflecourts down in the basement below the stage. I don't know about that, because I've never been there, didn't even know there was a basement. But apparently, there might have been some space, so, I guess my greedy needs is to get two shufflecourts in Marshalltown. So if there's a space, and they can be, you know, concrete nature, that would be great. One thing you may want to take under consideration if you do it there, when it was at the Senior Citizen Center, it was under kind of supervision, no kids. Would there be kids allowed at the Coliseum? And if there is, they need to have adult supervision, because kids will be kids. They'll be busting up the cues and throwing discs and so forth, so that'd be, but me as a shuffler and wanting to promote the game, I would encourage to kids to learn the game, but do it right.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Any other comment?
Your honor, just a, a quick comment, because as I looked around, I don't see anybody here from the, from the Senior Citizen Executive Board, or whatever you want to call them. But I will interject this, only because I don't want to speak out of turn, but I have talked to a couple of them, and they do have a, as we speak, they do have a temporary location that they're going to move to. I've also, two questions. One would be, and I think Jessica had said that we possibly could get in to the Coliseum, not this week, but maybe next week, or this week, or whatever. The reason for that is, is they would like to take a tour of the upstairs and the basement. I do know that, that before the tornado, we had had some conversations with, with that group. They have some, they have the ability to put forward some compensation. So I think it's a valid argument for that group to be able to see what we have to offer as a Coliseum, simply because it would be a long-term renter, or, or a long-term lease with that. There's, if we stay with the plan that we had originally been with, and this would be my other question of how long it would take, if we give the okay to go ahead with the complete works of the Coliseum, how long that's going to take us to complete? That, what that does, it all gives us direction, it also gives them direction on how long they need to secure the place that they're going to move to. And I thought maybe one of them would be here, because I know they've been having conversations amongst themselves, because of, one, the Coliseum, and two, they also had entertained the idea of a new building. And so, I think to be fair with them, and it really hinges on what we do with the building. But I also think it's fair to them to at least give them the opportunity to say yes or no to, to our Coliseum. Doesn't hurt anything, we got, I don't think the building over here needs to be tore down in the next 10 minutes, so, I was hoping that one of them would be here, and they just aren't, so...
May I respond to this comment, please?
Keep it short, because I let you go about six or seven minutes.
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. What he's discussing there, those that are on the board for the senior center are volunteer people, Marty Mitchell is the president of that. The city needs to be reminded that it is the city's building, we own that, we own that building, we own that property. And I do know the person that was working downstairs, the Bobby that was mentioned, she prevented people from voting for a person that wanted to be on that board. She did not count the votes, and that's true. And there was another person that heard her state that July 19th, the day of the tornado, and he is not here. But I heard her say that directly, and I know my vote, along with two other people that voted, was not counted for a person that wanted to be on that advisory board for that building. That's all I'd like to add.
So, your honor, is it possible that there will be a meeting for this group to come over and look at the plans for the Coliseum, look at what could happen with the Coliseum?
I've shared the plans. I don't know that actually going in and visually seeing it right now is, is the best case, because ultimately, the plans have a lot of moving of walls and things to put in new bathrooms, and so, the, the space wouldn't be the blue room as it sits today, it would be different than that. And so, that's where I, I was visited today to set up a meeting for next Tuesday morning with some, some board members from the Senior Citizen Center, and so, that's where, that's where that stands right now. I mean, it's possible to take them in the Coliseum, but it doesn't look right now like it would on the plans.
But to at least look over the plans together, okay.
I think that's after, actually, what they're after is to see if they're going to have enough space delegated that they're going to be able to use. I don't think they, they really care what it looks like right now, because anybody can visualize what four walls are going to look like. And if they're, I think what they're after is, is either way, I think what they're after is they want some security, they don't want to, they're not, they're not interested in, in waiting for two years till it's done unless they've got a commitment. And if that's changed, then, then I hope they come forward and say, we don't want to have anything to do with it. I mean, obviously, it's just, it's their decision. I mean, I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, so, I just, they wanted the opportunity.
Well, I, I was going to say, I have a meeting set up for next Tuesday, but that was, I had no intention of taking them into the Coliseum, because you can't really visualize where hallways are going to be, where things are now, because it is that area that was, that we've talked about is completely different than what it looks like now in the proposal.
I think what they're looking for is, because we don't have it done yet, they made, they may want to have some interjection in how it looks, whether that be the upstairs, or whether that be down in the basement.
And so ultimately, I would say that's up to all of you sitting around this table. If that's something that they would like to bring forward as a proposal as we talk and go through some things, I would say that could definitely happen at some point. It's obviously, you know, a shell of a building, whereas if, if you all wanted their, them to have input into a space in the building, you all could decide that that was something that would be possible at this point.
I think that's, I think that's basically what they're after before, you tear the, we tear the building down, and, and they're stuck with a temporary place, and then they make a decision on their own, whether they, obviously, if we tear the building down, then they've got to do something. And I, I think what they're after is an opportunity to, to, for no other reason, cross the Coliseum off, so to speak.
I would say, I would look at the Senior Citizens Building as being something that's a longer option than the Coliseum at this point, because, one, we'd have to hire an architect to do plans and specifications and put together a whole thing, so we haven't started that process. We don't know a cost estimate for the full renovation, and whether or not that exceeds our ability to, you know, to have to go out to a public referendum or not. So there would be other things that we would be looking at in that whole scenario as well, that, quite frankly, the, the Coliseum is the project that is in the hopper, that's, that's, you know, it's not moving, I mean, there's, there's still work that needs to be done, the plans and specifications are not finished. But, but realistically, you know, delaying this, and that's why I suggested having a resolution on the agenda for October 8th where you formalize it, that it's providing direction tonight, you can formalize whatever your direction is on October 8th, but even with the Senior Citizens Building, that project would still probably be two-plus years off in order before it to be completed. So, that's where I don't think that, even in a temporary situation, that that's something that's going to be helpful in terms of a timeframe or, or planning.
I just have one more question. Is there any funding that the Senior Citizen Center could put into the Coliseum project?
We, we haven't discussed that at this point.
Okay.
They have amassed a certain amount of money, though, for a rainy day. The two of us met with the three volunteer board members, and that was part of that discussion.
That you would have to get from them.
Would, probably now would be the time, if we're going to, if, if they want it, if it's big enough, I'm thinking, size-wise, whether there's enough square footage there, and especially after you get a kitchen put in, to meet all the new regulations and stuff, if there's enough room left. The Senior Citizen Centers over there, they made it real homey, and that's why a lot of the people come there, because it isn't just four walls and a, and a light hanging like the lights hang here, there's, there's curtains up, and, and they made it into a real homey atmos, atmosphere. And if that's, if that's where they decide, then that, maybe we ought to have them get with our architect, too, to make sure that, that they get what they want, too. We may, whenever there's money involved, everybody thinks everybody ought to contribute, but we spend a lot of money on kids' recreation, a lot of money on adult recreation, and I think we need to spend some money on the senior citizens' recreation, especially if we're going to a new location. We, we have to make sure that they're, they're comfortable with where we're going, and they should have input into where they're going.
And I, I would say that that would be completely up to you when we, when we get to that point, that, yeah, that would be, if your plans and specifications aren't finished, or even if they are, before you put things out to bid, you make changes.
So may I ask what our options are at this point to move this forward?
I, I am recommending that, that there be a motion to provide some sort of direction tonight to move forward with my recommendation, which is to tear down the Senior Citizens Building. The conversations I have talked about with the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging and the Senior Citizen Center are going to continue regardless of, of what happens with that building. That was the direction you had asked me to go prior to the tornado, and so that's the, the direction that we're still moving. But your other option would be not to, to move forward with, I would say the other option would be to move forward with hiring an architect to start, you know, your plans and specifications on the renovation of a Senior Citizens Building.
I would move, with all respect to our seniors, that we will provide them an active and a place that will meet their needs. I would move that we direct the staff to communicate with the insurance adjuster, that the city's intent is to demolish the current senior center, but again, in our plans, that we provide an active senior center within existing city buildings. And my thought is the Coliseum.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Further discussion?
I don't like the word "existing city building." We might, you know, we might be able to add a little something on to make it a little more pleasant for them, so...
And I'm, I, I certainly appreciate that.
Okay.
How would, what would be a better way to place?
No, no, that's fine, just as long as everybody understands that, that's fine.
Again, I would move that we provide an adequate and comfortable...
Space.
...and serviceable place for our seniors to have to gather.
There you go.
And, and I would say within our Coliseum building.
Let's call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Blamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
It's the first time I've been glad I didn't have a vote.
You can have mine.
All right, let's go on to the final discussion item.
Discussion of Sponsored Project Rehabilitation of Parking Lot H.
I, I was, their computer fell asleep, but I did pull up the, the graphic that was included. One of the things that, this also is stretching the memory of the, the council, we have, by borrowing from the state revolving fund for the manhole lamp hole project, we also applied for sponsored project dollars in the amount of $290,000, which is, it's sort of a grant, but it all results in basically a zero percent, adjusting the interest rates to include it into the principal at a, at a lower rate. So we obviously, as I said, have not moved forward with this, borrowing at this point, but we are being asked for direction on whether or not we're going to proceed with the proposed project, if I can get my mouse to move over here, proceed with the proposed project, which was the Parking Lot H, which is located behind the Tremont at First and Church Street. And it was, the, the sponsored project dollars need to be used for a green infrastructure water quality project. And so, my, it's not opening for some reason, but, but basically, we've got some cost back from engineers where we're, we were able to put back together some...
The second one.
Yeah. engineers where we were able to put back together some, yeah, put back to, or put together some cost estimates. And so what you can see provided there on the screen would be what the parking lot would look like, which is drastically different than what it currently looks like. Part of it would be taking your spaces down to be, to, from 104 to 68, to basically accommodate porous pavers in the parking area, as well as sort of bio-retention stormwater management areas to help control the stormwater. And then, as you can see, kind of on the bottom, the pink line would be some actual new stormwater lines to help with that runoff. So as I mentioned, we have $290,000. You can see that the price there is estimated at 864. What you do see up there, too, is with the cost applied, 864 minus 290,000 equals 574,467. Last December, we actually took this project forward for a water quality initiative grant with the Iowa DNR, and it was not funded at that time, but we were told that it looked like a good project that would be suitable for this funding, and that there will be another round of funding this December. And so we would be applying, if you move forward with this project, we would be applying for that additional $100,000, which would take the city's share down to 474,467 estimated. So as I said, this comes before you tonight, sort of in a weird way, just because we normally would have talked about this before, we would have, you know, proposed borrowing for it. And so ultimately, I want you to know, if you say no to this tonight, we still have the public hearing for the authority, we just don't then actually borrow the money. But we do see this as a project where we still have to spend $290,000 on a water quality project somewhere. I can't say, and I don't know that Justin would disagree at this point, it doesn't seem that there's been another water quality project that seems to have come forward as a result of the tornado, and so that's where I'd recommend moving forward with this project, continuing the borrowing, and then ultimately applying for that $100,000 grant in December.
Question here. What are we anticipating as far as expenses above and beyond what the Iowa DOT will provide for Highway 14, so on? We've got, I know there are curbs and gutters, and there are access points, and there are medians, and so on. Are we buying a pig in a poker? What do we know about that?
Are you talking about the south part, or the north part?
I'm talking about the whole, the whole project, really. We don't know.
Will we actually be talking about the south part at the October 8th meeting?
Yeah, fine. What do we have now? Estimate?
An estimate, at this time, we only have an estimate for the south portion, and our share would be roughly 1.7 million.
We'll provide more information. I want to make it very clear, as Justin puts out that number, a majority of that is not the medians at this point. And so that's where we'll have this for future conversation, and we'll give you the breakdown, and then our proposed funding sources for that project.
Okay, my point is, we've still got tax money. We don't know where we stand on certain things, and these things are a couple of them, especially the Highway 14 project, the median question, the extra costs, which seemed always to be underestimated and overspent. I'm afraid of that, is what I'm saying. I urge caution. The statement.
I have a question, please. Isn't this the parking lot that we rebuilt just a couple of years ago?
Yes. No, that would be the parking lot one block west, at Second Street.
One block west.
In front of our office.
The First Methodist. This is behind the Tremont.
Between Mike and our office. And that one was actually going to be beautified at one point, and then that got, instead of a lot of green space, like, pulled off the table.
Yeah, I thought, anyway, this, are you, how are you going to handle all the water? There isn't any storm sewers in that area. Everything runs south, and the streets are usually full when you ever get a rain.
So the plan, you got it, would be to collect that using porous pavers, bio-retention cells, and then to-
Underneath the ground?
Yeah.
Underground?
Yeah.
Okay.
Discharge it with some new stormwater infrastructure that takes it and connects it to the closest storm sewer.
That's way down south, right?
No, about half a block away on Church Street.
Really?
Right there, halfway between First Street and Second Street on Church Street.
Okay. Be a beautiful parking lot. I would prefer us to spend the money on a couple houses that are destroyed over here and buy this corner, and get the corner cleaned up on Highway, where Highway 14 comes into town.
And you'll still have $290,000 to spend on a water quality project somewhere within the community.
Well, we're saving water quality there.
Any other questions or comments? Public comment?
I don't know if we gave you your direction.
I would request a motion be made to direct staff to continue with the planning of this project, that we need to give some direction to our engineering firm on this one, and to the state to just let them know that we're going to continue with this project.
We'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I move to proceed.
May I ask a question of what is the implication if we do not?
That we'll have $290,000 to spill, spend on the project.
Beside that, is it, I'm thinking of the water quality implication, is it, is the water then pooling in that lot, causing damage to the cement? Tell me the implication if we don't.
I believe, and I think the mayor can confirm, it kind of sheets off the lot, and then basically sticks into the curb and heads down Church Street.
It's done a lot of damage to our curb out front.
So what happens if we don't spend the 290?
You've just given away some free money.
Money isn't free.
In this case, I mean, it is. It's a grant, and so you'd be basically turning down a grant from the Iowa Finance Authority and Iowa DNR.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do it right now. However, I think with the downtown plan, we will look at improving the parking lots. We're not going to want to build anything in that parking lot. It will remain a parking lot, because we need the parking. So it seems like it would fit in with whatever future plan we have anyway. It's just that some of it is paid for now, which is nice.
Mr. Isom, I think I heard you start to second that motion.
I will second Bethany's motion, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? We'll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Blamer?
No.
Martin?
No.
Wieren?
Yes.
Carried 4-3.
Very good. We are now on to the last item, which is all public comment. I'm tempted to waive the reading of the formal notification, because everybody who's here that heard it the first time around.
It's different.
It is slightly different, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll read it fast. Members of the public may make comments on any item which was not on the agenda. During this time, speakers shall approach the microphone, state name and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes, unless comment is, longer comment is authorized by the mayor. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with open meeting laws. We've got to figure out a way to shorten that. With that caveat, is there any public comment?
Just don't read it.
We could post it, couldn't we?
Yeah, don't read it.
Well, nobody has stepped forward. I would like to share with you, I have 10 signed copies of a book. The author was up here last week and met with our leadership team. It's by Kathleen Cook, and the title is Rising from Katrina. And she gave one to each staff person here, and they're here for your reading, if you like. Take them, they're free. Whatever is left over here, I'm hopefully going to send back to the library so that they can be distributed there. And with that, let's call the meeting adjourned at 7:11.